Bid out as fast as we can. Got three bidders. I don't have, I'm sure y'all have got it in your packet.
Yes.
The bid tabs and all that.
Yeah, but that's printout.
Capscapco is lowest by about four hundred thousand dollars, near five hundred thousand dollars. They're a little over our engineer's estimate, as you can tell.
Yeah, right. I mean, I was saying about thirty percent over.
Yeah, that's a good chunk.
Hopefully you can provide us a little detail on why.
It's a big one.
Sort of an overage.
It is a big one. Well eight is a, it's bigger than any well y'all drilled and bulleted. The, uh, if you look on the bid tabs, you can see electrical number. It's three hundred thousand dollar higher than what we were really anticipating. And when we came before the number, we looked at well seven. The, the, the bid tabs on well seven, we added a bunch for inflation, then we added a bunch because we knew this is a three hundred and fifty horsepower well pump motor. But two hundred horsepower well, no booster pumps there. But, uh, yeah, that electrical bid was high. Just the, just the disconnects on those booster pumps out there on, that are exposed on the piece of unit strut. Those are thirty four thousand dollars a piece. There are two of them sitting there.
Is all this electrical on site?
It's in the building. Yeah, it's on that site. It is in that water plant. Yeah.
Five hundred thousand dollars of on-site electrical. Without having to bring electrical in.
Uh, Cherokee County is going to run the, run the transformer in there.
That's not industrial.
No, that's, that's, they're, they're going to do that for free to the city. The, uh, yeah, that was a big one. Apparently when you start getting those sized motors, those prices, that equipment just starts going exponentially. No, it's the, it's the VFDs.
Right.
And of course, we would have motors, booster pumps. Those, those are in this price too.
They're in the bid, but they're not, they're not in that line item.
That's right. That's right.
That's not part of the pump.
The, uh, the, the booster pumps are part of the pumps. The booster motors are part of the pumps. The, the VFDs and all those components are inside those stainless boxes inside the buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and they're just, they're, they're a year out. Those, those VFDs are a year out for them to build. So there's nothing that's sitting on the shelf at all.
Well, I'm going to take this back. So when did, when we first got the, the estimate, how long ago was that?
We first started doing the well. We did those estimates before we ever drilled the well, before we drilled the well. It's been two and a half years or so. It's been quite a while.
So I was figuring there'd be like, just because of, of the cost, you know, an extra thirty percent or so.
Oh, yeah. Everything's still going up too. That's right.
This was, this was cra- this is, this is huge.
And even the generator. If you notice, the generator's alternate item.
So, uh, yeah.
Y'all want that. That's another year out too.
So on the alternate items, I see, I'm assuming these are alternate, like you have asphalt down here versus concrete.
Yeah.
Is that the two choices?
Yes, right.
And then I see you got a two hundred and fifty thousand up top, and then I guess that's two options.
That's right. That's right.
But there's not a generator up top?
No.
Are we debating whether we have a backup generator?
There won't be one.
Some are options and some are alternates.
That's correct. Yep.
But, well, my point, the generator's the only one that's not up top. That's an option. All the other ones are alternate.
That's just an option, yeah. When it's, that's a six hundred amp service, that is a big, big generator. Uh, yeah, if you want it, and, you know, you need it, honestly, in my opinion.
I was gonna, I, I would say we.
But it's a year out.
Pretty critical. Uh, we would want some kind of backup.
Yeah, well, seven has a generator on it. Of course, it's a lot smaller. It's a lot smaller amperage, but.
David, I thought, did you, didn't you always, I thought we always had a generator kind of plugged into the project?
We did, but, um, being the generator's so high, we put it in the alternate.
Yeah. I mean, you can add it later, but I can't say it's going to get any cheaper.
So what's the deciding factor between the storage tank?
Uh, David didn't want to spend the money on it.
Yeah, we went with a two hundred and fifty thousand gallon ground storage tank versus a four hundred.
Yeah.
Do we have room on site if in the future we want to add?
Sure do. Uh, if you want to add one later?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we could fit another one there too.
I mean, without demo and that, I know you go, yeah, but I'm saying.
Yeah, 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 we could put another one, we could put another one.
We have to go with two fifty now, and then.
But you look at the price of the two fifty versus the price of the four hundred on your bid tabs. A little, you know, difference, but it's not double the price by any means, you know?
So.
We can fit the four hundred. We've designed the site to where the four hundred would fit in it too, with the building, yard piping and.
But we have room, if we go with the two fifty today.
Yeah, yeah.
We got room in the future if we want to add another two hundred or one fifty.
We could, we could find a spot.
We could always do that in the future. Kind of same with the diesel.
Sure good. Sure good.
So you said engineering's, I, I was curious how developed the MTOs are.
How what?
Is engineering complete as far as MTOs that were, I'm sure we gave MTOs to the bidders. Material takeoff, like how they did electrical and piping.
Yeah, they're done. Oh, yeah. Oh, that's done.
So we're done with engineering?
Yeah, oh yeah. Engineering's all done. That's right. And we sub our electrical engineering out. And that, we were kind of waiting on it. We were kind of pushing those guys, hurry up and get it out, we could just get this thing bid out.
So, uh, well, I know you don't have in front of you, there's a, several line items that are somewhat still in discrepancy. At least in the version that we're looking at.
Okay.
I don't know if we had a total actual bid, low bid? Another worse line item.
Well, you have the base bid would be.
Yeah, no, I'm, uh, looking at. What is that line item? It's number thirteen, first install, open and cut, creek crossings.
That's for the eight inch water main.
Yeah.
I'm just saying sixty seven hundred dollars in a star.
Oh, that was, uh, that was a typo on our bid.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Which one would?
It was sixty seven hundred lump sum, not sixty seven hundred per foot. That was.
Is it on the back of yours, Brian?
Oh, is it? Really? Oh, good.
Yeah.
You see how small that is?
I got a bigger, I got a bigger bird.
I've got a big bird if you need it.
I didn't do it. I couldn't, I couldn't.
Sorry.
Take that for that mess, it'll be tough.
I mean, the quantity's eighteen on that one, so I'm just trying to figure out, was the unit price?
Yeah, it was eighteen linear foot.
Sixty seven hundred.
Yeah, this, yeah, it, it, we had written it in sixty seven hundred.
For the unit or for the total?
Well, we actually written it for the unit, but yeah, we're not doing that. Yeah, that, that's supposed, was supposed to be the total.
So you get back into a unit cost?
Yes, oh yeah.
Sixty seven hundred divided by eighteen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the sixty seven hundred for the total is correct.
That's correct. Yeah, that, that unit cost will be different, yeah. That was a, that was just a math, you know, arithmetic error.
Your, uh, your trench safety, is that? That was the intended bid price?
Trench safety is usually a small price. It's something we put in all our contracts just to say, we paid you for trench safety. It's, you know, it's, kind of releases the city of reliability. Most folks don't put a whole lot of money on that because it's it's something you normally do all the time. When you, you lay that, if you're laying a pipe, you put trench safety in your pipeline, if it's, unless it's like shoring. So it's, that's a, that's an item we've always included just to cover the city's liability. But the biggest hit was that electrical. It's a, it was a, we, our jaw dropped when we got our sub price on that one. It was crazy.
So for the city, if it goes to Brian, we're gonna, who's gonna be our oversight for payment? Like, it, this be a reimbursable contract, right? Is, is this for a lump sum contract?
You bill, no, you bill monthly. Yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be reimbursable.
That's right.
Unit, it's unit reimbursed.
Yeah, it's just good that unit price, unit price is just, you, end of the month, you submit a bill.
Right.
That's verified.
But, right, so the, the verified.
Yeah.
Who's gonna verify the quantities for the building for us, David? We use.
Sir?
Who have we used in the past?
Well, this project is probably going to be me, because I'll be on the site most of the time. Verifying that the product's there, the product's installed, checking products, make sure it passes the pressure test that needs to be.
And if David doesn't have time, I mean, Brandon Corp has a, has a contract y'all too. They do a lot of, uh, inspection, I think, support sewer plant too. They've got a hard contract that, we don't run that either.
The inspections, is that in the bid, or is that going to be on top?
Yeah, you'll have to pay your inspector.
Yeah, we need to have an inspector.
That'd be a third party kind of thing.
We can't put it on them that they're doing work. I mean, they should have inspection, but.
They can't inspect their own work?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. So the city needs to have some kind of.
So, and, and we've done it for, they'll have like Brandon Corp, they'll have Brian Johnson out there verifying things. Don't have a problem with that at all. Yep.
So just, I, I guess.
Small stuff, David does a lot.
Take your enough calls.
So, uh, Sonya, I want to talk about money. I want to talk about money. What, what, what are we gonna, there's a huge difference here. We have just enough to cover it for you.
Could you help, if we don't inspect it?
Yeah, but, I mean, this is too much money to spend not to have inspection for this.
Some have it being planned another year, in a different budget.
Yeah, it's going to be a year-long thing.
Oh, yes, I mean.
Could, could you help me get a handle on what the total cost of this well number eight's going to be? I know we issued a tax note, I think in twenty-three, for just drilling the well itself, and that was what?
That was two million dollars.
Two million dollars. And now we're going to put another two million on top of that, and that's a tax note that we, uh, approved and issued last meeting. That's the two million sixty thousand dollar tax note that.
The second one was in, the first one was in twenty-two, and the second was in twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
So it'll be four million something for well number eight, but down like that?
Yeah, oh yeah. Yep. But that well put that, oh, a lot of water. It's a good, it's a good.
It'll take us into the future for sure.
Yeah.
Is that going to be then our largest single?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's going to be toting the, most of the load. It's going to be toting more than the rest of your wells put together. It's going to be your, and that's kind of why I'm like, generator, you know? It's, it's, it's going to be your main, main man. Yep.
So on the generator.
And you can think about that later. We can add that back in. If, you know, we, it's, it's alternate. If six months down the road, say, hey, let's go ahead and put that in there. But the lead time is a year. It's, it's, we're going to have that plant basically built, tanks will be sitting there. We're going to be waiting on VFDs for the electrical in the control boxes, and a generator if you want it to show up.
How long would bids get for on the alternative?
Uh, they're ninety. I believe these are ninety days.
And what do you think the construction period's going to be?
Oh, it won't be that long. Seven, probably like six months, but we're waiting on parts. We'll have that thing, the, the legit, the, the meat of it built out six, seven months. And we're going to be waiting on VFDs for the control panel. So it won't be operational for a year, waiting on electrical components to come in.
You think this time next year will be operational?
Yeah, it'll be here. That's right.
So we got pumps, media voltage pumps.
Yeah, we.
Inside pumps. So when we install these pumps, and this pipe not operational, who's going to maintain it? You got to turn the rotors in the pump?
Yeah, we probably won't mount those motors until we get ready for the electric. The pumps will be in the ground. There, there are a can pump in the ground, so we probably won't put the motor on top of it. We'll keep those in a, you know, climate-controlled area until the time comes.
But we still have, you still have to maintain pumps eating up there in climate control.
Well, the water pumps in, in below ground, not going to worry about it. The, the electric motors, they're, as long as you don't have them rained on, and if they're not working, not operating, that's fine. Once they start operating, you can, they can be rained on because they, they dry themselves out. It's, there won't be a problem with those. But like the well, that three hundred and fifty horsepower pump motor, it is sitting at the, down at the well driller's in his office right now. He said, I'm not putting it out there for it to sit there for a year. And it, because that won't be good for that pump, just sitting out in the weather for a year without it operating. So the, the hundred horsepower booster pumps, we'll kind of do the same thing for those. We're probably going to just hold tight with them until the electrical, all the electrical panels come in, and they're, they're easy. Set them, fire them up. But we'll have all the cans, the pumps. Pumps are actually below ground, the motors are above ground.
So as the city, do, do we want to build half the plant and have it dormant for six months? And, and I'm just talking out loud. I mean, it, it.
Well, nothing.
I don't know. I, I guess we have to order long lead equipment.
Yeah. Nothing, nothing we're going to build sitting there is going to be damaged by those, uh, electrical components. It's going to be your ground storage tank, the yard piping, the pump cans will be set, uh, but there won't be the motors on top of them. Electrical can be done inside the building. The building can be built, driveways can be built. Then we'll be kind of.
So the pumps or the motors, we had warranty discussion on a few months back.
That was the well motor?
Yeah, well, well, motor itself, that's right.
Similar discussion, do we need to have on any of these other items that may have security warranty?
I don't see anything with the boosters.
We do, you know, when we bid these out with our suppliers. I've gotten to where I'm really, I'm pushing them. We did a job in Canton, we did a wastewater treatment plant in Canton. We had to, it was like the same thing, lead time, you order quick. Then you have motors sitting there. We have them wrapped in plastic, but.
And, and this is, I mean, most of our projects, this happens. We just, yeah.
So on, on the electrical, just going through the schedule in my head. So most of these items, to be able to build for them, it has to be installed.
Correct.
You're going to send an inspector out. You verify, hey, you, you did install this eight inch pipe, you're going to submit new ones for X amount of foot.
Yeah.
Or inspectors go out there with that, definitely.
Yeah.
So on electrical though, so we just, my concern, we have one line item, four hundred and fifty thousand.
We do percentages. If we, if we put the boxes on the wall inside the building, we may build twenty, twenty-five percent of it.
So that.
But that VFD won't be built, it won't be billed to us until it's delivered. So we won't be out money. You won't be out money.
And that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
I mean, I could see you as a contractor would not want to be out that money for six months.
No, no, we're not. We don't, they don't send this a bill until it's here.
You're going to get your names on the list.
They will order it with, with the council approval. And we, of course, first thing we do, we do shop drawings and submittals, sign off on those, and then they start production on those, given in the, in line. But we don't get an invoice for that, you know, that's delivered.
Because I was wondering how that would work. I mean, I, I wouldn't want a contractor to be out waiting a year.
Oh, yeah, sitting there floating on that money. No, no. Yeah, we, we cover ourselves on that quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Then I get, we don't want to put you in a bind.
Oh, yeah.
But then we also don't want to pay until it's.
No, no, nobody does. Uh-uh.
Yeah.
And we, we're on them quite a bit because we don't, a lot of these, uh, equipment suppliers, they say our warranty starts when we drop it off. Well, no, it, it doesn't start till we start that motor up and it starts running. And, uh, I've.
I think most equip, it's a, either, it's a either or. You get eighteen months from delivery and twelve months after.
Uh, my contract with them, I'm on them. So we're not doing this delivery warranty starting. It's going to start whenever y'all, it's installed, we do the startups, everything, y'all check it, everything's good, that's when the warranty starts. So we have to argue with them quite a bit, you know, that kind of stuff.
That, that would be my.
I got stung in Canton like that.
If it's not up and running, you, you run out of warranty.
Oh, yeah. That's right. We got, I got.
And you haven't got any use.
I, I got stung in Canton that way.
Yeah. And, and that was other thing is, you don't take delivery too soon.
No.
You fire it up and it doesn't work.
But in COVID, you had to get it coming. You had to order everything as fast as you could because of lag times were horrible. So we really wanted it installed, delivered, when we're going to install it.
Is, is there not much cutting for your site development?
Not much. Uh-uh. There really isn't. A little bit of clearing, a little bit of grading, but.
I guess that's included in all the other.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's a site workout on there, the foundation item for that ground storage tank too.
In, in, in kind of the Glenn's question back, that we have a couple of asterisks on the total, on McKinney and Moore. I, I figured it out, all the other ones. It was just a math question, right?
Yeah, that's right. That's all it is. They wrote their number down wrong.
I saw that on the bottom though, for the total, there's a note, so we're showing two point six million, but in the note it says, written down is two point four. Is that just all the line items above, didn't that help?
They wrote their total down wrong, yeah. In, on those bids, they have to handwrite the unit price, and then they have to handwrite the unit, by a numerical, and then they have to handwrite it in words. And a lot of times you catch them, they don't, they, they won't write it correctly. And we have to check all of that in our bid tabs and calculate it out, and you catch any, uh, arithmetic or mathematical errors that way. So that's what those little asterisks are. They did have some errors, but didn't change, you know, as far as placement on the, the bidder's standings.
And did we go back to the vendors and confirm that's the number you meant? I mean, they gave a bid for fifty.
Oh, yeah, because we sent them all these too. Yeah, they, we sent all that out to them.
So if we get the PO signed whenever, when we break in the ground, what's the skid? I, I guess what's the skid for these?
It'll take about a month, maybe a little less, to get all the contracts executed, the bonds put together. Uh, then they have a reconstruction meeting. We do the, um, shop drawings, shop submittals after that. Once those are approved, then they can order those, uh, VFDs and the generator if you want it. So that's, you're talking probably for anybody who sets foot on the ground now, a month and a half, two months.
And then what with the timeline?
Uh, for its electrical components, it's going to be a year before they're in. Now, we're going to have the plant built probably in six months. The building and the ground storage tanks and the pride yard piping and all that will be done well before those electrical components come in. Yep. And a warranty on that stuff doesn't start until the project accepted, until the project's completed.
Just out of curiosity, is that two hundred and fifty thousand, is that built on site?
Yep, welded up right around the side. Comes out in big curved sheets.
But I, I guess, question for inspection. What specifications we doing to, like, do we have a list of specs?
We got a spec book about that thing. And pretty much all us local engineers use the same specs. We kind of related to Tyler, but. Yeah, we got the, plenty of specs.
Brian, what's the adjust existing water service, nine seventeen?
That's if, that's this item in there, nothing, it has not been identified on there, but Stephen Trambl likes putting those adjustment items just to establish the price. If we need it, we got it. If we don't, we don't bill for it.
What, what does that mean?
Uh, say if we're doing something out there by the road, where we're tying the driveway in, and we need to move or adjust a water service from that existing lot we purchased. There's a list of some money in there to be able to do that, to cover that if needed. I don't think we're going to need it myself. But it just establishes a price for any of the contractors. If, uh, if it is needed, then we have a, a way to pay for it.
And then I'm assuming on a few of these line items that are the same, uh, like the SCADA system. I'm assuming we gave that, we gave that price to each contractor to use.
Sure. Oh, yeah. That was a set number in there, like a contingency number. It's, it's a hard number.
So how, if I'm, if you're the contractor, how can you draw on that contingency? What would the language be that you can come to me and I say, no, I'm not paying you extra like that because you missed it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, what, what's a trigger for you to, because you do need it. I'm not, I mean, you definitely want that in the contract, but you also.
It's going to be, you know, kind of like the same thing. If we put a little bit in this month, we're going to charge a percentage. And if you get Brandon or somebody like that, they're going to look at it and it'll be the, the total scope of work versus what's been done. They're going to make a, a judgment on how much to.
Are you talking about line item thirty-two to seventy-eight?
No, I'm talking about contingency.
Contingency.
Like, how, how, what would trigger you to be able to build this city for contingency?
Only if it was something that we had no idea popped up. Say you're out there digging and you come across a bunch of contaminated material you need to get rid of. Yeah, that'd be a change order kind of stuff. Contingency is another item in there that's, that's a dollar amount in case for those unforeseen items.
That's to carry in all budgets, not your budget.
That's right. Yeah, that's right. We don't get paid anything out of that.
Yeah.
If we don't have any, any, everything goes smooth, we don't charge it down on that one.
I, I guess if that doesn't, you come across this contaminated soil, that's it.
Yeah, it's all just off the wall stuff.
You would submit a change order for us to approve before any work began.
Have to. Yep. Sure would.
Not saying you would, but just contractually, you can't just send me a bill and say, well, it cost me a bit of a C.
Not at all.
And again, not saying you would.
There's some signatures on that one. It's got to be done, yeah. And a lot of times it's a small amount, team managers sign off on it. They.
Yeah.
They come out and look at it and say, yeah, we negotiate whatever needs to be done and sign off on it.
There's a process.
There definitely is, yeah.
To carry that contingency.
That's right.
It's a city's contingency, not your contingency.
Exactly. Exactly.
So if you had to summarize this increase, I mean, it's primarily electrical, but I mean, it looks like our mobilization bonds went up by.
Oh, yeah. Those always go up.
Two hundred and eighty percent.
The building was a little higher too, because it is, it has an extra room on it.
Right away went up by three hundred and forty-five percent.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's.
And so like, like well seven, it was, it was open pasture. This is a lot of trees that were having to take that water line through, through to meet some clearing and that.
Well, we had trouble right off destabilizing the property before we could.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's where that tank is going to be sitting, right on all that geogrid and all that rock.
Right.
Yep, that's right.
Y'all ready to entertain a motion on this?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the base bid, um, at this time for, um, capital engineering, uh, little bit, um, for the cap swell number eight installations.
Motion second. Is there any more discussion?
I do have one question. And I should have done the math. What would be the delta on going from concrete to asphalt? I guess I don't.
I don't have my calculator on me right now.
But, uh, so you got roughly seventy grand for concrete road.
We have asphalt road down at the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
You have to add your asphalt, your prime.
If I went with asphalt, I'd have to go with all three.
Yeah, asphalt, prime, asphalt, exbase. That's right.
So you're looking at fifty-five thousand?
Yeah, I kind of stuck with concrete because all these developers, all these lift stations they're building, they're putting concrete drives to those lift stations. I don't.
Yeah, I'm, I wouldn't say we did it, I'll just, since it's so high, I'd just bring up a question.
Yeah.
Well, it's only fifteen.
It's going to last a whole lot longer than asphalt too.
Asphalt's not going to stand up to the heavy equipment if we have to come in. So it's a, it's a cost savings to go with concrete.
It's kind of like the generator, we could always change in the future when we're looking, but we're only talking about.
The asphalt's way better long-term for, for just maintenance, just.
There's a lot more maintenance.
Once you're done, you have the problem.
Yeah.
Okay, Tom, I'm good.
Okay, back to the, uh, motion, could you tell me it was a base bid and the amount of? You want to repeat that, of course?
Well, the number I'm looking at is two billion, one oh five, two, three, two.
Okay.
I think that's what that says.
All right. So all in favor of item number one, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion will carry. Item number two is adjournment. So we will adjourn that meeting, special call meeting. Thank you, Brian, I know that was.
Thank y'all. That's okay.
Thank you, guys, you know, it's huge.
Can you get that one, I'm gonna start the next meeting, ready?
Um, yes. I wanna get out, I might borrow the battery. Do we have an extra, you want me?
Let me change the battery, that's.
Have they jammed up?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm ready for new work.
We're gonna delay just one minute, uh, before we start again. Sorry for the.
Chief, I need to talk to you, please.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's on down. Seven, number seven, item number seven.
Man, I was on, I was speaking. All I know is, uh, when Martin took over, I was on that, I was on that. I was, and I was like, I'll be on, I was like, yeah, let's do it, let's do it.
I guess we're gonna handle things technical with that.
Yeah, I did, I was really caught up in it. Forgot where I, I forgot I wasn't the county council.
Say what?
The wizard.
She thought that she did that.
Yes, and so she said she was bad around that and then.
What, what, or, uh, way good?
No, not way, no, she took horse down.
I didn't think so.
No, um.
Bless me. Because of that, they, they're all, they hit the day off. I didn't think they had a looking at. I guess they cut it there. Eating chocolate for dinner?
Give me a little chocolate. Want some laffy cat?
Are you gonna be ready to start?
Yeah, this is. At this time, I'm going to call. At this time, I'm gonna call our Bullard Regular City Mini, regular, called me, our Regular City Council Meeting to order, sorry. Um, at six forty-one P M. And Ms. Reddick, I'm gonna ask you to call roll again, make sure we're still all here.
Mark Anderson, Mayor protestant.
Here.
Lane Power, council member.
Here.
Shirley Coe, mayor.
Here.
Chuck Redwing, council member.
Here.
Lang McDaniel, council member. Wesley Smith, council member.
Here.
And we have a call.
All right. And, um, yeah, we gotta see.
We can't ever pray too much, come on, stand up again. If you weren't here for the first one, you'll get the, have the second one, okay? Dear Heavenly Father, again, we're grateful for, uh, the day that you've given us today. Father, we're grateful for each person who's here, represents our community, those who served Father willingly, um, as volunteers, we're grateful for that. And Father, I also wanna remember our council member who's absent tonight, um, Elaine McDaniel, and his, uh, recovery from health issue. And thank you for that. And for each person, Father, I pray for blessings upon us individually and as a city, and for guidance, direction, and wisdom for the council as they make decisions tonight and every time that they meet. And I ask all this in the name of Jesus, our Savior, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, we'll have the pop, public comments regarding agenda items. Any citizen wishing to address the council regarding an item on the agenda may do so after filling out a speaker card at the registration table, handing the card to the city secretary, so that citizen may be recognized by the mayor when that item is considered. And I do have cards here. Item number one, citizens' participation. Any citizen wishing to, to address the council regarding an issue not on the agenda may do so after rising, giving name and address. The council may not address any issues not listed on the agenda, however, it may receive information. Is there anyone, any cards for, okay, okay. So, um, item number two, discuss and act on authorizing police chief rag to execute a memorandum of agreement authorizing, entering into two eighty-seven G task force model. I took the opportunity to talk to chief. Our city attorney is not here. And our city attorney, um, said he got his wires crossed, he, it just texted me. And, um, Ms. Doris, he's asked us to table this item.
I did?
Yes. Um, so I know that you all came out and I appreciate it because I am all about our, our citizens coming and, and, and speaking at these meetings. Um, I would suggest we are going to hear it, um, but maybe have a point person appointed next time so that way, um, someone that knows all of the concerns can kinda talk to us. But, um, just, uh, kind of a heads up on that. We will be meeting and on this item, but we will have to have it table, uh, at the request of our city attorney.
Do you plan to, uh, do you anticipate it would be at the December meeting?
Yes.
Okay, the December meeting, uh, the regular meeting is the second Tuesday. Um, this meeting was on Thursday, just by chance because of the Veterans Day.
Right.
Uh, so it had to be moved by council at their last meeting. But the normal meeting in December will be the second, um, Tuesday, and I'm not sure, is it the eleventh, does?
The ninth.
Ninth, okay. That comes right before the eleventh, but, uh, Tuesday, uh, December eleventh at six would be.
No, December is only December.
Ninth, I'm, I'm going on the eleventh, I don't care what y'all say. No, it will be the ninth at, uh, six o'clock. And so we would put it back on the agenda, I'm speaking, mayor, in case.
Yes.
I hope that doesn't matter, but that would be what is anticipated to do.
Yes, that is.
Okay. Mayor Coe, we appreciate you. Council members, we thank you. We'll be calling, we'll be sitting down, okay?
Yes, sounds good. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it.
I'd move table item two.
To, until December.
Till the December meeting.
Okay. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion will carry. All right. Item number three. Conduct a public hearing, discuss and act on approval to change the zoning from C two, General Commercial District to R two, two-family residential district duplex lots nine and ten, block ten, and Green Valley Subdivision, South Lovelace Street, Smith County, Bullard, Texas, Advocate, J M B Ventures LLC.
I'll explain to begin with, if you don't mind, come on up, uh, Krim. So you can see the red area there, there are two lots. The one that is next to three forty-four is the vacant lot, which Mr. Krim wants to build a duplex on. It is currently zone C two, as you see in the request. And because the lot that's adjacent to it, just to the north, that has the two, uh, numbers on it, that already is a duplex and it's also zone C two. That was way before, I don't know why, you know, but that was where I got here. And so, uh, to clean that up in this process, uh, we included that lot to be as, an R two instead of a C two as well, if you approve that. Now, Mr. Krim can.
Thank you.
Tell you something else, I guess.
Well, and I, it, this, it's upside down in here.
Uh-oh. Yeah.
So, um.
Can you see it right here?
But it's right there on the corner, right?
Yes, sir.
It's that corner lot in front of the duplex.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Dorf, what? This, item three describes lots nine and ten. Which, again, which are line nine and ten? The two that are circled in red?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
Yes. White down here.
And.
I was at this P and Z meeting, I was trying to make sure it's the one that I attended. This is for our person?
No, this is him, this is, this is a different one.
Oh, okay.
The other one was on, the other one was on Waters, and that was completed last time.
I just saw Henderson Street right there.
Yes. And so this is at Henderson and Lovelace.
That's why I was trying to read it.
So that's nine and ten, there's enclosed in red.
Yeah, before you get to the curb.
Right, are there any others that are currently C two?
Yes, the, uh, you, can you see the one just to the west there, that little bitty?
Uh-huh.
That is a C two, right there.
Is that the only one?
Mm-hmm.
Sure is.
Now, across the street and down some is C two.
Yeah, no, I, I specified, yeah.
Yes, you're right.
You may have said that, did P and Z approve this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, they did approve?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I should've said that.
You're wanting to build a duplex?
Yes, sir, yeah, we'd like to build a duplex in, uh, similar fashions as one next to it. The, one next to it is a little bit older, it's been there for a little bit, but, uh, we'll build something that's newer and looks nicer, it's a little more with the times. Um, but we'll keep it the same fashion as the neighborhood there and increase the value.
Why can't you build a duplex on C two?
Sure.
Why can't you build a duplex on C two?
Well, there's setbacks and, uh, that are different, um, that kinda thing. There's a duplex also to the, if you travel east along, um, three forty-four right there, I can't see the number. You skip a lot and then you go to the next lot to the east, that is a duplex. I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe two twenty-nine may be even, um, a C two. I might not have that in my mind correctly.
Across Loveless there?
Yes, even though it's a residence. Mm-hmm. I don't know why they did C two whenever they did the zoning along some of that area. Now, the one that you just asked about, I know that was requested by a previous owner of that property. Well, there's another something coming up about that pretty soon, but that's not on the agenda, so.
When were you saying the, the C two allow duplexes?
Sure would.
Just got, there were setbacks.
Yeah, may, may have forced you to setback, true.
But it does allow duplexes? But with tighter setbacks?
But we had changed some of those two R twos.
Yeah, we have.
I don't even know where it is because there are duplex right there anyway.
Were there any concerns expressed by the neighborhood?
There were no protests received, no.
And appropriate signs were put out?
Yes. Yes.
That's all, I pay my mom every day.
Yes. You should see those, they're really pretty, and Maria changes the date on them and she writes really well. And Maria changes the date on them and she writes really well. Raven has even changed some dates on it. Yeah.
Well done.
Maria doesn't work.
You know I'm gonna ask that every time for the last six times.
Fine. We would love to confirm.
We've got it now. Yeah, take it down tomorrow.
All right, so we're gonna close that hearing.
Got it closed?
Got it closed.
I'm over approve the change the zoning from C two, General Commercial District, to R two, two-family residential district duplex lots nine and ten, block ten in Green Valley subdivision, South Lovelace Street, Lovelace Street, Smith County, Bullard, Texas, have J A M B Ventures LLC.
Second?
Motion is second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that motion will carry. Item number four, conduct a public hearing, discuss and act upon approval. Okay. Item number four, um, will also need to be dropped. Um, we have been asked by Sutter Multi Foods to drop this item. I have talked to them and, uh, corporate is, um.
Delayed it for now at least.
That, well, yeah, they, 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 yeah, they're not gonna, um.
We're not pegging it. We're dropping.
Yeah, we're dropping.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
The corporate's tabling it.
They, corporate is tabling it. Um, they're, they're not going to support it at this time. I think there was some kickback from some, the Tyler area too that, so, um, yeah, unfortunately.
Do you need a motion just to drop it or?
I do need a motion to drop it.
I'd move to, uh, drop agenda item, uh, number four from the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, that motion will carry. Item number five, discuss and act on appointments, reappointments of board members of Bullard Economic Development Corporation, whose terms expire December twenty twenty-five. Board members Dustin Wilkinson, Chris Young, and Zachary Dominey are eligible for reappointment for terms to expire December twenty twenty-seven. And board member Hayden Ray has completed the maximum terms and is not eligible for reappointment.
I will say that, if you didn't already have the information, that, um, there's not a recommendation for the replacement for Hayden Ray.
Right now, yeah.
But that if you all would make a recommendation but not appoint that position tonight, this is what Pam asked, um, and then let that be, um, the chairman of Bedco, know the name, if you have a name to recommend, but not make the appointment tonight, but make that one at the December meeting. But if you're ready to reappoint the other three, if that's what you'd like to do, to do that and then make the appointment of a new person in December.
We don't have anyone to appoint tonight because we don't have any resumes or any.
That's right.
Uh, information in the agenda, so we're not gonna make an uninformed appointment. So, we will.
But if you have recommendation of someone that you would like to, um, for them to seek to consider, but just not do that appointment tonight, does that make sense?
I mean, it does, but that, yes. It, it won't be done, so there's, there's really, um, the recommendation would have been made already so we could vet the information. But, um, so anyhow.
Make a motion, we reappoint Dustin Wilkinson, Chris Young, and Zachary Dominey
Yes.
to the terms described. Is that good enough? Will it really term out in twenty thirty-three?
In the what?
That's the last year he can be eligible.
That's when he was appointed. Was it what? I'm sorry.
Twenty thirty-three? Yeah, that's not.
Oh, yeah, you can serve, you can serve, uh, three two-year terms. Does that count correctly?
We'll just reappoint them to a three-year term tonight, correct?
Uh-huh. But that's when they would term out if they stayed on. That's why that all is in the parentheses. Uh, I'm sorry to confuse you, yes.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I made a motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion is second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. None opposed, that motion will carry. Item number six is discuss and act on recommendation of committee for award of planning and management professional services agreement for GLO grant application to have associates and authorize city manager to sign agreement. So, we just so happen to have someone here. If y'all have questions about it.
Schedule? What's the schedule look like?
Schedule will be, so as soon as you guys award the contract, we'll submit to GLO. This is a no-match, uh, no-local-match grant. Um, we're gonna try to get, they're sunsetting the program, the GLO is, um, in December.
Application deadline?
It's, well, we'll have it in. It's a quick, once you're in the system, you're in the system. And this is a, this is not a competitive grant. It is a, you check the box as you get awarded. We're gonna go after more money because they're sunsetting it, so we're gonna try to get three hundred thousand out of them. We know we can get two hundred. We're gonna try for three. The, it takes them about three or four months to get their contracts done. So, my guess is we would really start this process. There are things we can do in the meantime. We can set up like steering committee, all of that, but we really won't kick off until probably in late March or April, um, because of needing to get the contracts back from GLO. They may get them done faster because there's not enough people.
So, you expect to have the application in hand, award, and all that, and ready to kick off by next spring?
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah. And, and again, they're trying, they say, they claim they're streamlining the process now. Take that how you want. But it's exciting because it'll get, it'll get you new comp plan, code updates, all of that. Um, and it's a no-match, which is great.
So, on that grant, if it's three hundred thousand, what happens to the extra hundred thousand?
No, we're, we're trying to get, I mean, it just, it just allows for more bells and whistles. We can do a lot more with it. What we'll end up doing is as soon as we get confirmation through GLO, they're going to, we'll have, the scope will be approved by them. So, we'll know exactly what is in there, what that covers. But it will be comp plan, future land use, code update. The more money that's in it, the more details we can get into and do more extensive rewrites.
Sounding is gonna be wonderful.
Yes.
I would like to mention just a minute about the, the process we went through to review these applications. There's a committee appointed to, uh, review all four of those applications. There's a request for proposal published by the city. And, um, Pam, myself, and Sonia were, uh, asked to read and review the, uh, proposals. And, uh, one of the, and there's a lot of stuff in there, but what this chart is, it, it, uh, lays out the four, uh, applications that we got. And the, the specific things we were asking, uh, the applicants to respond to was, what does it cost if you're gonna write the grant? We're asking that, uh, building codes we looked at, look at flood prevention, zoning, land use, mitigation. And the thinking there is, you probably shouldn't have a comprehensive plan put together, build a bunch of streets that are now two feet under the flood plain.
Right.
So, it makes sense kind of to do it that first. So, once all those pieces are, uh, worked through, then we're gonna ask.